Welcome and good evening to the City of Shakopee City Council Meeting for March 6, 2021. Item number one, if we could call the roll, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Here.
Counselor Brennan.
Here.
Counselor Whiting.
Here.
Counselor Lehman.
Present.
Mayor Mars.
Here. Thank you very much. Item number two, let's all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much, Mr. Reynolds.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and members of council. Before we got started tonight, I wanted to just briefly mention the passing of former councilwoman Joan Lynch. And Joan was one of the first people who introduced themselves to me when I came to Shakopee, and she was simply an icon of this community and just a phenomenal person, incredibly dedicated to the city, incredibly dedicated to everything that she served on, and which was quite a bit, actually. And I just wanted to read a paragraph about Joan that is in her obituary. Joan was a lifelong public servant involved in many endeavors that were dedicated to the life and health of Shakopee as a community, to education, nutrition, and women, and to serving disadvantaged populations. A true pioneer and role model who successfully balanced work, family, and service, this included working at the Scott Carter Dakota Community Action Agency for over two decades, and serving on the school board, city council, Public Utilities Commission, Police Commission, and Rotary. Her work at CAP served thousands of individuals and families in need, and she touched many students with her involvement in STRIVE, a mentoring program that brought her much joy and fulfillment. With her work in Shakopee, she openly shared her passion, commitment, and informed views about Shakopee's potential, and made deep contributions that helped shape how Shakopee has grown and prospered as a vibrant community attractive to residents and businesses. I will tell you, it's hard to imagine anybody having that kind of impact in a community, but Joan certainly did. And so I wanted to make sure that everyone was aware of that, and I just wanted to pass along my incredibly deep respect and gratitude for her as a person and what she gave to this community.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. Certainly long-term icon of the city and worked behind the scenes, but I believe that she worked diligently to make Shakopee better in every organization that she was part of. So thanks for that. Other comments? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. My mother years back worked with Joan Lynch at this CAP agency, and I've had the privilege of working with Joan on many projects over the two decades. Granted, we're from different political ideologies, but a very respectable individual. There's not a nicer person. She set the standard for how people can work on a project from different sides and make something of it. It was absolute honor. Should be missed, and it was a privilege to work with her. So to her family, my thoughts, condolences, and prayers to family and friends. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Counselor Brennan?
I had an opportunity to work with Joan at the CAP agency. She was my manager and very kind lady who cared about the community and the people that the CAP agency served. And she was also very open to sharing her thoughts, giving advice, and, you know, never having a real negative opinion about you or me or the differences if we had any. She always had good advice and really served the city well. So I appreciate everything that she's done, and best wishes to her family.
Thank you. Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Joan was a friend of mine, a mentor. I like what Council member Brennan said about advice. She was willing to give advice whether you wanted to hear it sometimes or not, but I always, it was always with respect, and I always valued it. And I do wish her family the best and all the condolences. She'll be missed.
Thank you. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. Like everyone has said, my most deep condolences to her family. I had the privilege of meeting her when I started at CAP. She would just go and visit every once in a while, and I had the opportunity to meet her. Very sweet lady, and my most deep condolences to her family.
Thank you all for your comments. Peace be with Joan and Joan's family during this time. Thank you. All right, let's move ahead then. Approve of the agenda. Are there any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Not to the agenda itself, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor Whiting?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, Contreras.
Counselor Contreras, a second. I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you very much. Moving ahead to consent agenda. Any changes, corrections, Mr. Reynolds?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Staff is going to pull 4B2 to make a clarification in regards to where the funding is coming to fund this additional building inspector.
All right, 4D2?
4B2.
4B2, excuse me.
Sir.
Thank you. Others? Other? Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as modified.
Second?
I have a motion and a second for the modified consent agenda. Any other comments? Otherwise, with that, we would read the modified consent agenda into the public record. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. These are the consent agenda items for two March of 2021. 4A1 approves the city council meeting minutes for 16 February of 2021. 4A2 adopts resolution number 2021 TAC 027, which appoints individuals to various boards and commissions. 4B1 adopts resolution number R2021 TAC 026, which supports the Shakopee School District's Green Step Program. 4C1 adopts resolution number R2021 TAC 028, which accepts a grant from the Minnesota Department of Public Safety to support traffic safety measures related to speeding and aggressive driving. 4C2 declares a forfeited vehicle as surplus property and authorizes its disposal. 4D1 accepts quotes and awards a contract for the fire station number one parking lot paving project to Minnesota Roadways Company for $154,707.78. 4D2 approves the participation in a Scott County recycling grant and authorizes execution of the recycling program agreement for 2021. 4D3 accepts quotes and approves a contract for the Stagecoach Park Project to Northwest Asphalt for $118,323.85. 4D4 approves the annual park cleaning contract with Treasure Enterprises Incorporated for $35,438.39. 4D5 accepts Mendat's Speed Limit Authorization Report and authorizes posting a recommended 50 mile per hour speed zone for McKenna Row between Eagle Creek and Tinta Okantu. 4D6 adopts resolution number R2021 TAC 025, which approves plans and specifications and orders the advertisement for bids for the 2021 Streets and Utility Reconstruction Project. And 4D7 approves a contract to relocate a digital message sign with Egan Company for $49,730.
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds. I have a motion and a second on the modified consent agenda. It's been read into the public record. There would be no further discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The modified consent agenda is passed. Let's move ahead then to item number five. Now, I'd like to recognize any resident that would like to come forward on an item not on the agenda. Please come forward, state your name and address for the record, and welcome on an item not on the agenda. Did we see, did we receive any electronic communication, Mr. Reynolds?
No, Mr. Mayor, we did not.
All right. Seeing none, we would move ahead then to item number six, which is business removed from the consent agenda. Staff remove 4B2, and Mr. Kurski will present.
Mayor and council, this is a request for an additional building inspector. So current staffing in the inspection department is a building official, a building inspector, our building inspector intern, which is partially funded by the state grant that we received, and an electrical inspector. Last year, to give you an idea of permit activity, we did 1,611 building permits, 1,315 electrical permits, 988 mechanical permits, over 1,000 plumbing permits, and 195 sewer and water permits. That generated, as you can see here, almost 6,000 billing inspections, almost 2,000 electrical inspections, 1,300 mechanical, over 1,300 plumbing inspections, and 413 sewer and water inspections. We could see the need for this position when we looked at our 2021 permits. You can see the 2020 versus 21 activity here. Last year, this time, we had 674 permits, at $372,000 in permit revenue. Already this year, we've had 792 permits at $652,000 in revenue. So right now, we're on path to exceed our current budget numbers. We need additional staff for inspections and to free up the building official to do plan reviews in a timely manner. We have a lot more larger projects than most cities our size. About 50% of our permits right now are running for commercial. We're still waiting on permits for 170-unit apartment building that's due in the next 30 days, a 60-unit apartment building, a 500,000-plus square foot industrial building, and the hospital's renovation. So we're also anticipating, based on our current trend, over 200 single-family homes. So based on that, we feel comfortable moving forward to add this position because we will exceed the revenue that we currently have projected for this fiscal year, and that this will be paid for out of this year's billing permit revenues.
Thank you, Mr. Kurski. Questions of staff? Mr. Reynolds?
I just wanted to make sure that council also was aware that we are also in the process of putting together a request for an additional engineer. That will be coming forward for council. In the past year and a half or so, I've been monitoring our numbers in regards to these positions. When COVID hit, I was not secure that we should add staff at that point. I wanted to wait until we got into 2021, and as you can see, our workload has increased even more. And both the engineering staff and the building inspector staffs are where that is occurring. That position will also be paid for out of building permit revenues and will not affect the tax levy.
Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. We had a discussion about the excess building fees that we set aside, and we had the discussion that when we, when we would add to keep up with demand, that that money then would go toward that need to support where the funds actually came from originally. And so I get that part of it, but my question now is, and this just dawned on me tonight, if we do a budget amendment that increases the budget by that dollar amount, and then when we carry next year's budget and we look at last year's it's going, so will that increase then be backed out of the next year's budget because it's coming from internal funds?
Mr. Reynolds?
Mr. Mayor and Counselor Lehman, no, that will not. It actually becomes part of the budget. When you're looking at the budget, what we're talking about is where the revenue comes from for this particular. It's still in the budget. It's just that the revenue comes from the building inspections fund, or excuse me, the building permit fund. And that will continue to be the, that will continue to happen in successive budget years. It does not come from the tax levy itself.
Okay.
It's still, it's still in, I'm sorry, it's still in the budget, but it's where the revenue comes from.
Good question.
Yeah, it shows an expense. It shows the expense, but then under the revenue side, we're going to show the general levy revenues and internal fund revenue of building permit fund as a line item that offsets one inspector.
Other questions of staff? I guess I'm always amazed at the amount of volume and the amount of permits, the amount of staff time. You know, with the building permits last year at 5,300, and then it takes 11,000 inspections, boots on the ground, to go out and inspect, close those out. You know, we've been talking about that, that you put a big project in the ground this year that starts to be built, but it might take over a year to get completed. And how many times does the inspector have to go out there for electrical, plumbing, construction aspect of it? So I talked to other mayors and other communities, and the amount of growth that we have, I think we're pretty blessed as the deck showed that of our building permits, 50% of it is commercial, which again gives our community great balance. So I think, I think this ad is appropriate and in moving forward even as we sit here today. More, Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I agree with you. You know, we have Canterbury moving forward with development projects, township annexations as they come forward. We talked about the building trends and the growth and that I think that part of that is 50% commercial is quite, quite an achievement in itself, but also is a good revenue stream. It shows that it seems sustainable, and we know that there's so many projects out there. So with that, I'd make a motion to approve resolution number R2021-029, amending the 2021 budget for the building department by adding 150,000 for salary benefits, taxes, equipment, software, and one-time expenses for hiring a building inspector.
Thank you. I have a motion. Counselor Brennan, a second. Questions? Further questions? Comments?
I don't have a, I'm sorry, Mayor. I don't have any questions, but you know, we talk about customer service, and I think that this will provide a good customer service in that area. And I look forward to seeing the engineering proposal coming up soon because I think both of these areas are in need of it.
Okay. Thank you. Others? I do have a motion and a second on the table. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you very much for that discussion. Let's move ahead then to 7A, our 2021 alley reconstruction project. This is a public hearing. I would entertain a motion. Counselor
Mayor, I'll make a motion to open a public hearing.
Second by Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Contreras. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you very much. And moving forward, Adam will present.
Good evening, everyone. This is the public hearing meeting presentation for the 2021 alley reconstruction. Next slide, please.
Hold on.
So the project is located between Fuller Street and Lewis Street, between First Avenue and Second Avenue. It's in downtown Shakopee. Next slide, please. The existing conditions, they're 10 to 12 feet wide, bituminous alleyways. There's various small utilities are under these alleys. They were built back in 1994, so now they're showing their signs of age. As you can see in the picture there, there's many areas that have extensive patching. This is leading to some areas of ponding of water and localized flooding. There's no large utility such as sanitary water main under the alleys. There's some limited storm sewer under the alley between Holmes and Lewis Street, but that's pretty much it. With the various small utilities under there, it makes it very difficult to get an extent storm sewer underneath these alleys as well. Next slide, please. So our proposed conditions, we propose to pave these alleys with concrete pavement. We'll be doing an inverted crown, kind of like you can see in the picture in the bottom left. This will collect the water in the center of the alley and allow it to drain out to the streets. This is, this is good. Sorry, can you go back to the last slide, please? We'll also be replacing some of the street lighting in the alley between Fuller Street and Holmes Street. There's one light pole there that we will be replacing. There's no intended improvements to sanitary water main or storm sewer. Like I said, the majority of this is just filled with small utilities, so it makes it very difficult to get any sort of storm sewer back there. Once we get the inverted crown, the concrete pavement back there, we'll be able to solve any of the localized bonding issues that we've seen just because of the patching with the bituminous. Next slide, please. The proposed cost is $175,000. It should be noted, though, that in the CIP, it's at $371,000. The Deco Apartments are on Second Avenue there, and Holmes were able to pick up a good portion of this project, so we were able to reduce the scope and the cost of it, slowing it down just a bit. Next slide, please. We're assessing this on an area basis. Majority of the lots in these alleyways are very unique in how they front the alley. A fronted, or when your front footage assessment wouldn't have been ideal for this kind of situation. The area method is more equitable to all the properties that front the alleys. Only 30% will be assessed to the properties that are adjacent to the alleyways, and then we'll just be doing the actual cost of the street improvements that we'll be assessing. So this kind of, this figure shows the properties that will be assessed. We made some adjustments to the way corner properties are assessed, such as the one along Fuller Street and Second Avenue there. Only a third of that property is benefited by the new alley, so only a third would be assessed. And on the right is the preliminary assessment roll. Next slide, please. This is our preliminary project schedule. We went back in February to do the feasibility report. This is a public hearing, and then we'll be coming back for approval of plans and spec, and then hoping to get this constructed early in the spring, early summer. Trying to limit the impacts of this as much as we can to a month or so, two months max, is what we're kind of trying to do here. So we'll be bringing it back for public, or public hearing assessment in the fall then. Can I just open it up to
Thank you, Adam. Questions of staff? Just one minute. Thank you. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. On the CIP estimate is 371. The feasibility estimate is 175. Is that 175 for both alleys combined?
Correct. Yep.
And are we bidding this out?
Yes.
So bids could come back. We don't know until we get the bids.
Correct.
Mr. Reynolds?
That's actually a very good point, Counselor Lehman. You know, this is our estimate at this point, and what we'll do is that when we bid that out, there are many, a multitude of things that could affect that bid with the price. But our estimate was cut substantially due to the ability of having the apartments. But our estimate was cut substantially due to the ability of having the apartments be a part of this project, so.
Other questions of staff? I was looking at the timeline here and you know, looking for, really, my, my comment is geared towards a, trying to be faster at it, because we don't really want a whole another summer of, of construction in that area, but the, you know, the alleys are very important, so if this comes along on the line item here on our different steps, it looks like we could have substantial completion by July. I also think that there's value in these alleys. We've done, I think, three of these concrete alleys now. And the whole idea was many years ago, kind of to do at least one a summer. I know last year that got abbreviated because of the apartment building. We wanted to get that in first, so. But at least act, these access points for the alleys are, serves the back door of these businesses for their supplies and, and I think is vitally important, so. Glad to see the numbers coming down, and hopefully they hold for our bid aspect. And hopefully the inconvenience moves quickly. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with the access for, they're used pretty heavily by the businesses for deliveries and stuff. And I think concrete is the obvious way to go. Might be a little more expensive, but I think longevity is, is going to be a lot better. But I think equally important in this is the movement of the water, stormwater runoff. I think that's probably ranks fifty-fifty with the, with the delivery access, so that's definitely needed in the areas. We're kind of limited on where stormwater can flow. The inverted crown is going to move it to where we want it, and it's going to be able to take more capacity, I would imagine. And where the end termination is, you know, we know that we've been working on some of these larger collection areas, and so I absolutely think it's a good, good plan.
Other questions of staff? Counselor Contreras?
Mayor, thank you. Yes, definitely, it's needed. My question is about lighting. I know you showed that one picture where we, you have that light, but will there be more? Is there more than that down the alleys, is my question?
Adam?
So a part of the, the apartment complex, they have some lighting that's going between that alleyway. We're kind of limited with space between the alleys, so there's, there's not much we can really do beyond that. There are small little lights on a majority of the businesses and the buildings back there that front the alleys that are able to kind of light up the, the alley just a little bit, but beyond that, we don't have anything planned.
Okay.
Counselor Brennan?
I agree with Counsel, Counselor Lehman regarding the drainage in the area. I drove Pat down that block between Lewis and Holmes, and it's very icy right now. And I noticed that a lot of the buildings had drain spots that go right onto the alley. Is that going to be diverted appropriately, or is that going to cause, cause any issues?
Adam?
In that?
So we'll be, we'll be taking into that with our design. Will we get in those drains to go into the alley, and then obviously it'll go down the, the inverted crown? So we're taking that into account as well. We won't be diverting it beyond where they're kind of exiting right now, I guess.
Okay. I have one more question.
Yeah, follow up?
Yep. Last summer, we had some tents and, and set up on First Avenue. Are we expecting to do that again this year?
Um, Steve, I know you're on, I don't know.
Mayor and council members, we had that situation when it was restricted to outdoor dining. And so that was exclusively set up to accommodate those restaurant owners for that scenario. Currently, they're, they're allowed, you know, I'm not sure what it is, fifty percent capacity indoors or something like that. We don't have plans to, to go that direction again this summer, but if that is a request from the business owners, that is something we, we certainly can entertain, and we would, you know, we're, work with you, the city council, to implement something like that, if that is what we need to do.
Okay. Let's see how far there, we can get a little closer to spring and summer and see, and depending on the further outcome of the pandemic, but good. Counselor, or Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I just want to point out a couple of things, you know, the, we, we know the dilapidated state of the, the current state of those alleys. And, and I do want to mention and point out again, the major portion of the funding from this coming from that stormwater fund, because this is the storm runoff for these buildings. They were built and, they have built way, way early in Shakopee's history, so they really didn't plan that in the system. So that's why some of that funding is coming from there, and that's why it's concrete and designed like that. One, one's concern I do have, because we have had one business owner down talking about using the alley, and I know we had discussions about lighting. And that's on the, the western portion of this project. I just want to make sure we reconsider, and I think lighting should be part of this project, because if it's concrete, it's not going to be done the second time. I, I really want to take a look at that before we move forward with this.
Okay. Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Had to get my unmute button going. Question for staff on lighting. Right now, if memory serves me, there's, there's lighting at like the end of each alley where the alley meets the Lewis, Holmes, and Fuller. Is that correct statement?
There's, it's not exactly at the end. There's one light that's at the end of, I believe, Lewis, but the others, I don't think are there, they're further down the streets from the alley slightly.
And I think the one by Babes is just south of the alley.
Yeah.
And then I don't know about the Lewis side by Wompox. Is there, I don't even know if there's one there. There's got to be one there close. Is it possible to put them closer to the alley on them streets? Because I, I, I'm thinking if you've got one on Fuller by the alley, and one on Holmes by the alley, and one on Lewis by the alley on both sides of Holmes, that would shed quite a bit of light down into the alleys, actually. You can get it about halfway each way, and then if, obviously, if Babes wanted to do something permitted in the alley, there's nothing that stops them from putting a security light on the back of their building, shining toward the alley that they could control during the event and turn it off afterward or whatever.
Mayor and council members, if I could, if I could interject a little bit on lighting too. We'll, uh, we'll circle back with you and provide a plan on what we have for lighting and what we, what we plan for lighting. But if we can, if we can step from the east to the west, starting at the east, there's a security light on one of the first brick buildings on the south there. And then when we get to the old, the small little driveway alley behind Billy, Bill's Togery there, we do have a public light there that we are looking at upgrading with a new light and new light pole, LED light. That's part of the old, old city hall parking lot lighting system, actually. So we do plan on putting that one back, and we'll, we'll flesh this out a little more. And then, and then the new, the new building, the Deco building starts, and they planned on having three security lights on the alley side right there in the alley, so that, that easterly alley will be lit pretty well. But we'll, you know, we'll, we'll massage it a little bit as needed. We, we understand the importance of the lighting there. And then if we jump to the, the next, the next block to the west, there are some, you know, private security lightings staggered throughout. But we also, right in the middle of a block, we do have a, a public street light in there as well. And we'll be replacing that with LED light as, if it's not already upgraded to an LED light. So we'll, we'll get a, a figure back to you that shows the all, overall lighting to, to reinforce that we do, that we would, do have a good plan there.
Thank you for those comments and follow up on that. Further questions of staff? Seeing none, this is a public hearing. Would any resident like to come forward and make comment on this? Please come forward, state your name and address to the record, and welcome.
Hello, Mayor Mars.
Good evening, welcome.
I'm Mary Isaacson. I live at seven oh three Lewis Street, and I own a business downtown, which is on the alley. I own Babe's Place. And I can't stress that we need better lighting in the alley. The alley is also a walkway for the people that are downtown. And I've had lights go out, the light that you're talking about is on my property. And we had some issues with it and quite a bit, you know, for a few years. And it gets dark down there. And with the lack of parking in the front, they are either going to be in the, in the parking lot on Fuller or on Home Street, and then up by Pablo's. Those are the options that they have to park. And so if we're going to ask these people to park on the, let's say, the Fuller parking lot, then they should have light to be able to walk down the alley and feel safe and secure. You know, we have a lot of business at the night, at night, and it gets dark. And so that's what I always worried about, is them walking.
You have a security light over your entrance there that, from the alley though, correct?
I, you know, I, I have a light post.
Oh, I'm thinking right above your door. I guess we discussed.
Oh, just by my door. It's just a standard light.
Okay.
Just a standard light, and then like I said, and I have a side in my side entrance, I just have a standard light.
That's the one I meant, yeah.
And I actually looked, I was sent something here today that, you know, put floodlights on my, you know, on the building, and I was going to check and see if that's a viable. You know, I don't know, my brick is, that's, you know, it's not real strong brick. So I don't know what you want to put in there, you know?
Right. Well, this project will be nice. I know that those two are pretty rough alleys and.
They are, and I would definitely thoroughly enjoy doing a start in the spring and end. I'm not going to lie, we're tired of this construction. We are, we're tired downtown, and.
We're trying to make it viable and vibrant and people and good for everybody, so, but thank you.
Yeah. But yeah, that's, I, that's why I just want, I just, I think it's very important for lighting down there. That was my main, my main thing, that's they gotta give us better lighting for the people.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I think that'll be great that see something back from staff on that and, on that concern, so. This is a public hearing. Would anybody else like to come forward and make comment on this project? Mr. Reynolds, have we seen, received any electronic comments?
No, sir.
Okay. Seeing none, Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second by Contreras.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. The motion to close public hearing passes. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution R twenty twenty-one dash zero twenty-four, ordering improvements and preparations of plans and specs for the 2021 Alley Reconstruction Project, CIF twenty dash zero zero nine.
Second, Contreras.
I have a motion and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote. Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
And it's Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, just a question. Will the information on the lighting that staff's going to get back to us be incorporated in the plans and specs after we look at it, or how is that going to work?
I'm here and council members, we will, when we come back for authorization for bidding, plan approval and authorization for bidding, we'll show you that plan. And I'm pretty confident that you'll be okay with what we have for a lighting plan.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
I mean, typically, typically, we would work with Spuck on our public lighting. So we, we would not bid that out as part of our plan. We would work with them on the lighting.
Okay.
Thank you very much. All right, let's move forward. Number, item eight. Stand, entertain a motion to recess for our EDA meeting. Counselor Lehman?
Motion to recess the EDA meeting?
Whiting, second.
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Whiting to stand for recess for our EDA by voice vote.
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. We stand in recess for the EDA. Madam President, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Welcome to the Shakopee Economic Development Authority Meeting on March second. Called this to order at seven forty-four PM. Could you please take the roll call? And you don't need to do that out loud. Number two is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Lehman?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second, by Contreras.
Okay, there's a, a motion and a second by Counselor Contreras. Could you please have the roll call?
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Whiting?
Aye.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Aye. Motion passes five to zero. Item number three is the consent business, and on the consent business is the EDA minutes. Mr. Whiting?
Madam President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent business.
And there's a second by Contreras. There's been a motion and a second. Please take the roll.
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Whiting?
Aye.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Aye. Number four is the reports, and that's the EDA bill list. Is there any questions? Mr. Lehman?
Madam President, I'd just like to say kudos to staff for putting itemization on each of the expenses. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Is there any other conversation or questions? Okay, number five. Adjournment, and Counselor Contreras?
Thank you. I'd like to make a, a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-one at seven PM.
Is there a second?
Whiting, second.
There's been a motion by Contreras and a second by Whiting to adjourn to Tuesday, April sixth. Can you take the roll call, please?
Ms. Contreras?
Aye.
Mr. Whiting?
Aye.
Mr. Lehman?
Aye.
Mr. Mars?
Aye.
President Brennan?
Aye. The meeting is adjourned at seven forty-six PM.
Thank you, Madam President. We'll reconvene the City of Shakopee City Council meeting for March second, two thousand twenty-one. And we're moving ahead then to ten A one, rezoning a property from B one to Light Industrial and Mr. Kurski will present. Mr. Kurski will present.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor said, this is a rezoning from Highway Business B1 to the Light Industrial Zone for property at 2022 Colburn Drive for the Shakopee Public Utilities. The request is to rezone this property. It's based on the applicant's desire to construct an overheight electrical distribution substation. Um, the substation will be used to serve the southwestern portion of, um, their territory, including newly annexed and future annexed areas. This is the site aerial, so it's this corner right here where these roads come together right off, uh, Highway 169. Property was recently annexed into the city. Uh, city and township met last fall and agreed that when a development is proposed, the project zoning should be changed to align with the 2040 comprehensive plan. Uh, this zoning allows electrical substations and they did receive a conditionally use contingent on the rezoning for overheight structures. Uh, city did receive a comment from a property owner concerned with the proximity to residential neighborhood and the lack of proper notice. Staff did notify in writing property owners within 500 feet of the property. And we also installed a four by eight foot public notice sign on the property. Uh, property was owned commercial when it was in Scott County in the township. Uh, the planning commission meeting, a Spuck representative shared the following, there is minimal traffic on this site. Proposed structures will be less than half the height of the adjacent XL energy towers. They would be providing extensive landscaping's, uh, around the perimeter. And the noise generation will be minimal and well within the noise levels allowed by the city code. City council may grant a zoning ordinance amendment when it finds that one or more of the following conditions exist and staff believe that several of these criteria meet this and support the requested rezoning.
Uh, thank you. Questions of staff? Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't know who this question is best pointed to, but is this site gonna, and what's planned gonna be large enough to serve the annexation area into the future?
Mayor and council will, uh, let the utilities answer that question when they come up.
Okay.
Good evening, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name's Joseph Adams. I'm the Shakopee Public Utilities Planning and Engineering Director. To answer Counselor Lehman's question, the substation site is large enough for us to host two power transformers and two, um, switchgear control buildings to, uh, have enough for eight circuits that would, uh, be able to serve this area of our system. And based on our long range plan, uh, that was completed in 2018, coincident with, uh, 2019 with the city's 2040 comprehensive plan, we are confident that this will support the growth, uh, goals of the city and the surrounding area.
Okay. Um, and you've obviously been part of the, uh, annexation process and notification of, uh, phasing and, um, what those, what those plans look like. So the, the capacity will be there?
Yes, we're confident we have the capacity to serve all of the projected various land use, uh, and densities that the city has projected in the population growth.
Okay. Questions of the applicant? I guess, uh, you know, the substations are at times, uh, kinda difficult to cite. And, um, but there's, uh, landscaping gonna be involved to try to diminish part of the look at least?
Yes, working with sta-, city staff will put in the appropriate landscaping units. We attempt always to be a good neighbor and to screen our site with a, uh, green wall of, uh, of, uh, evergreens and then, uh, other mixed, uh, trees in there and, and shrubbery to make it as attractive as possible, realizing that it is a substation and it does, uh, serve as an infrastructure, uh, element of the community. It, it is, uh, not possible to make it look, you know, like, like a house, like we do with some of the water facilities, but we will do our best to screen it.
Well, I know you don't want to make it too inviting for the squirrels, right?
That is correct.
Counselor Lehman?
That's a good one. Um, Mayor, is there's a big power, um, there's a row of towers that run through out there somewhere. Where is this in comparison to that row of big towers?
Sure, if, uh, Michael, you could put the map that was attached to report up. Uh, that corridor, that transmission corridor runs along the north, uh, edge of this site. There is a tower that is in the parking lot of the adjacent property, runs mechanical. And you can see, uh, to the east, the lines kind of over the farm field there. So that, that's the, basically the beginning of a corridor of a dual circuit, uh, 345 KB on the north, 115 KB on the south, which is the circuit we want to tap. This runs all the way parallel to Highway 169 to the east throughout the community. And we tap it for our Dean Lake Substation over by Canterbury Road. So we're gonna be connecting right near one of those towers.
Close proximity to, to get into that big voltage line that runs for our community.
Just a follow-up, Mayor?
Go ahead.
The, uh, tower that's being proposed in your project in comparison to the big towers that are already there?
Sure, that's a lattice steel tower to hold a double circuit. Towers we'll be building, um, and XL will be adding for us to, uh, make the substation work will be monopole, single, um, tower, uh, design and they will be approximately seventy-five, I think seventy-five feet would be approximately half the height of the lattice tower that's there.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for your questions. Other, uh, questions of, uh, the applicant?
Council member?
Counselor members?
Mr. Mayor, this is Counselor Member Whiting. Um, I have a question regarding, uh, access to that property. I, can I assume that the access, uh, once you get, uh, your needs in there will be from the little residential road rather than the old Brickyard Road?
That's correct. The, the access for construction and for operation after construction's complete will be from Colburn Drive. Um, our site plan showed, uh, three driveways. One will be the primary driveway for access to a parking lot. The other two will be emergency driveways for maintaining, uh, the equipment or replacing it, uh, or constructing the second lineup and will be very, used very minimally, excuse me.
Thank you.
But it's, it's not a heavy use. You're not at your substation every day or?
Normal, normal operation, there may be a pickup truck there once a day at the very most. It's, uh, is operational via our remote control system. So we're not there normally unless there's a problem.
Other questions of staff or of the applicant, excuse me? Seeing none. Mr. Adams, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, counselors, I know this has been in the works for a while and, uh, given the growth on the west end, Counselor Lehman?
Make a motion to approve ordinance number 2021 dash zero zero four, ordinance approving the rezoning of property from Highway Business Zone to Light Industrial Zone, move its adoption.
A second?
I have a motion and a second by, uh, Counselor Brennan. Further discussion, discussion, Counselor Brennan?
Yep, Mayor, I just want to thank the SPU staff and the commission for the work that they did on this project. I know that there was a variety or a couple other sites that were looked at and we've had a lot of discussions. So I really appreciate the work that was put into this.
Thank you. Counselor, uh, Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. And the comment that I would like to say is, it, I guess, I, I'm happy to see that this infrastructure is gonna be located by already existing heavier infrastructure. I know people don't like some of this infrastructure until they go to turn their light switch on and it don't work, you know? So it's, you know, this seems to be a better location to me than to have this type of infrastructure spaced away from already existing infrastructure.
Okay. Thank you. Um, motion on the table and a second. Further discussion, discussion, discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds?
Counselor Contreras?
Aye.
Counselor Brennan?
Aye.
Counselor Whiting?
Aye.
Counselor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you all very much. Let's move ahead then to item number 10A2, a master plan and A U A R for Valley View, County Road 83, County Road area, 42 area. Michael will present.
Good evening again, Mayor and Council. So this is a proposed A U A R in the Valley View area. So we've been receiving proposals for development in this area. There are water, sewer and traffic issues, along with some, um, significant stormwater concerns and also access to county highways. We did hold a development review committee, which includes our utilities, uh, to talk about what the issues were in this area. And it was decided then that we should do an A U A R. So this is, whoops, this is, uh, the area we're talking about. It's approximately 500 acres. Um, this property down here is, uh, owned by the Shakopee Minute to Walk and, uh, Sioux Community. Prior Lake is also on this border right here. We just completed, uh, work with the county on County Highway, uh, 42 and they were aware about potential future development in this area. So this is from a comprehensive planning standpoint, some of the things we're looking at. So, um, Shakopee Public Utilities has a water tank and their plan would be to build another tank here, um, to serve this area, running a water line down, um, this road, Wood Duck Trail to here. As part of the comprehensive plan in coordination with Scott County, there's also a proposal for another road through the site that would connect to an existing, um, intersection that's already been installed on County Highway 83. And the Independence would come down through the site, um, somehow through this area and join up to a new intersection that was constructed, constructed as part of, part of the County Road, uh, 42 project. As you can see from this slide, there are some significant, uh, wetlands in this area and drainage. So this area in particular has the, uh, ability to overflow into this area. You can see over on the SMSC property, they've built a pretty significant, uh, water course area for storage. We would probably look at a similar plan on this side for additional water storage. Stantec, who's the proposed, um, company on this, did a plan for a similar area for 3M. Um, this was completed and they came up with this master plan as part of the A U A R because you actually have to do some significant planning for roads and infrastructure and stormwater. And basically they proposed, uh, roughly $248,000, so we're calling it $250,000 to move this plan forward. The current plan would be to work with property owners, potential developers, the SMSC, Scott County, Shakopee Public Utilities and the public on coming up with a plan for the site, including a concept site plan that'll deal with stormwater, utilities, traffic and environmental impacts, complete and submit that A U A R to the EQB and the proposed timeline is about eight months.
Thank you very much. Questions of staff? Counselor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. The, uh, water coming from the south to the north as we are, if we are recall, we had the flood down Independence over top of, uh, Valley View and through the park into basements. And there was a increased covert put under Valley View in 83 in cooperation with Scott County and the SM, Minnewakaton Sioux. I guess one of my, my biggest concern here is obviously the stormwater runoff and capacity, future capacity. Um, and taken into, I guess, a question, will, will we be taken into consideration the current water coming to the north off the, uh, Minnewakaton property? And do we know what their future uses of that property might be if that'll change that water flow? Or will this process find all that out?
Mayor and council, yes, this process will find all of that out and they have assigned a, uh, staff member to work with us on that project. And I think, um, we're well aware of what the flooding issues are. That's why we're doing the A U A R so that we can actually develop a master plan to deal with sewer water and stormwater, which are kind of the three big issues this site has.
And then the second question I had, Mayor?
Yes.
And this one was kind of a confusing one to me where it talks about a thousand dollars per acre to the properties. That's for the properties, let's say you own 40 acres, it's a farm and you sell it off to develop. That will be paid by the actual, that repayment is triggered by development on the property. It's not like we're gonna charge an existing farmer a thousand dollars per acre for, for this.
There is no charge right now.
So, so Mayor?
There would be a charge at development.
Ma- Mayor and Council, this is a similar arrangement we have in the Jackson Township. So as development happens, a good, uh, example is the Powers site. So Powers did not pay that thousand dollar fee, but tried in development when they acquired it and replatted it for development, paid the thousand dollar an acre fee.
Um, Steve?
Um, Mayor and council members, if I could add to the stormwater discussion, um, Counselor Member Lehman, you, you asked about, uh, the SMSC property draining to and through Shakopee. Um, I, I would like to add that, um, through our Prior Lake Outlet Channel Agreement, the P-Lock Agreement, that actually is, is the one tool we have, uh, that formally, um, that's formalized that, that gives the SMSC an allocation, um, if you will.
Nope.
Nope, Steve froze.
I apologize, Steve. You, you broke up there.
The allocation, the, the P-Lock Agreement that we have, it, it's a runoff discharge from their property, um, into Shakopee. And then I would say, uh, Mr. Kurski, he also, uh, pointed out some real good improvements that the SMSC have done on their property downstream from this A U A R area. Um, so we have a good partnership with the SMSC to, uh, to work through all of that.
I just want to make sure that we've got enough capacity as it develops out so that we don't find ourselves in a situation that we did a few years back.
Yep. Uh, Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, no, I like the idea that we're using Stantec, um, highly qualified group. Uh, they did our master plan and, uh, the West End, uh, sewer plan thing. And I like the thought, you know, we have to do something with water storage and we know that and, uh, this may be the opportunity, that plan will find out. But with that, I'd offer a motion to approve the contract with Stantec for the amount not to exceed 250,000 for the completion of the master plan and A U A R for approximately 500 acres bounded by Valley View, County Highway 42, County Highway 83, to be paid out of the building permit fees and be collected back at a rate of $1,000 per acre, per the city fee schedule.
Second?
I have a motion and a second by Counselor Brennan. Uh, further discussion? Um, I, I would like to weigh in here. I think, uh, this alternative urban area review for this 500 acres, uh, is the proper long-term plan rather than the parcel by parcel concept. I also think this area is very unique because it has some topography, um, natural features. But also with that are the challenges of sewer water and stormwater and holding, uh, ponding, if we could make a little channel, uh, and have a trail against it, whatever that outcome is to alleviate some of the problems that we had in the past. I think is, uh, the long-term will be a benefit to the community. And look at it in a, in a build-out situation and then plan for those, for that urbanization of that area from what is very natural and farm field today. So, uh, I think, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of this master plan, uh, of this area. And of course, a lot went into it with, uh, uh, the 42 and allowing getting some access points there. And the wood duck trail and moving from the, from the west to east there. So, and I know that the utility did, uh, owns. the west to east there. So, and I know that the utility did owns enough land where their tank is to, to site another tank on there for that. So further discussion? Further discussion? Discussion by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Counselor Contreras.
Aye.
Counselor Brennan.
Aye.
Counselor Whiting.
Aye.
Counselor Lehman.
Aye.
Mayor Mars.
Aye. That motion passes. Thank you very much. And let's move ahead then to our workshop for our 2024 Strategic Plan Review and Update. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor Mars. Assistant Administrator Burkett will be here in a minute to walk us through. But I wanted a couple of things. First of all, remind everyone, this is a workshop. It's designed to be a little less formal. It's important for us to get direction and comments from you, so please don't, don't hesitate to interrupt us or to let us know if you have a comment on something. Please, that's, that's why we're doing this. The other thing is, is I want to take you back to when I first got here. We, we started a process of, of planning, and, and we started, at first, we had yearly plans where we came in January, and we would talk about what the objectives that the council was looking to have put in place on a yearly basis. And then we, then we extended that to a year to two and a half years or so, and then a year to five years, and then we put together at this point, this strategic plan. And the reason I, I bring that up, because it's important to recognize that the strategic plan replaces all of those things that we were doing. The reason we were doing those particular things was to, why we're asking for, why the council wanted to do something during a timeframe, was to, to try to start the process of thinking more strategically. And now that we have the strategic plan, traditionally, we will bring it back every year or so to review, report on what our progress is, and then ask for comment from council on, on other things that you might be interested in, and, and also if there are areas that you wish to tweak. And so this is the beginning of that process. And with that being said, Mr. Burkett?
Thank you, Mr. Reynolds and Mayor and Council. So I'm going to go actually really briefly just updating you, and we can send this PowerPoint out before you ask, because I know it's a lot more concise than the report that was with the agenda. But you can certainly tie all of this information back. So go ahead and go to the next slide. I'm not going to go through mission, vision, values right now, because I don't think that that's necessarily on the agenda. But today, we're just going to walk through the, the key outcome indicators, as well as the initiatives, and give you some status updates. And then you guys can have open discussion for, as Mr. Reynolds said, doing tweaks as you wish. Go ahead. So the first priority that we decided on was financial stability. And one of the things I always like to remind myself of is what these mean. And the five bullet points that are listed there are growing tax base, stable or lower tax rate, funded long-term plans, adequate fund balance, and growing non-tax revenue are all supposed to be kind of informed by these key outcome indicators. So the first one being stable tax rate, we actually wanted to see that tax rate changing over the course of time by less than the factor of inflation. And you can see, actually, we've had a pretty good gap. And what that indicates is that the average property taxpayer is paying less on their property taxes as compared to they are for, say, an average grocery shopping trip. So over the course of the last four years, that gap has stayed there, and you can feel pretty confident that property taxes aren't growing faster than the prices of other goods and services. Next one was the 2% increase in non-property tax revenue annual. And actually, it was only a 0.66% drop this year in 2020, which was pretty amazing considering everything relative to COVID. I would imagine that that's going to start coming back. Reducing the burden of financial institu, of financial burden of entertainment destinations, we didn't identify a percentage point at this time. 2020, we really didn't have any major changes, but I understand to a certain extent, we've done a little bit. Mr. Reynolds, I think, got a check the other day that leads to that. It just wasn't a good year to really have those discussions due to COVID. And then 100% of the high priority or priority one projects funded by 2024. I want to point out here, and I won't point out again, that this measure right here was actually dependent on Mr. Reinhardt doing his initiative to improve the five-year capital improvement pro, um, plan process improvements, which I think went really well. Because now I can say pretty comfortably that out of those 23 projects that we identified as a priority number one in 2021, they're actually all priority number one. And so when I went through and said, is there a good and stable funding source for all 23 of these projects? The answer was yes. Well, all but one of them. And I think that that might have just been because we had a little bit of a typo on the last one. So I would say we're in the green there on that one. Next slide. For financial initiative, our financial stability, our initiatives were to develop a long-term financial plan. Here is one that I know that Mr. Reinhardt has done some initial work on, but that's going to be a longer-term build. It's dependent on other elements this plan getting done. I would say it's on track. Improving the five-year CIP prioritization process, I would say that's complete, but we're always looking at ways to get better. Exploring methodologies for capturing tourism revenue. I did change this one to green, because we have been having conversations, and I did note in the report that one of the interesting things about COVID is that it actually gives us some good data points to say, what is the financial burden of the larger entertainment destinations that we have in this community? And then finally, there was the developing of the grant decision-making process. And at this point, I think we're recommending to just kind of suspend that without any firm date. And the reason is, right now, when we identify a grant that we're a good candidate for, 100% of the time, we're able to apply for it. We have the staff resources to get that done. So for now, it feels like something we can set aside until later. The second priority was enhancing our community strengths, with the first outcome being making our big ideas a reality. We had four projects that the council identified as high priority. And remember, this is a four-year plan, and we weren't supposed to get to 100%. But if you look at it, they're all green, because we've made progress on all of them. Some are closer than others. We got really close with the Innovation Center this year. And then I'm not going to go through each of those numbers, but you can see that Mr. Kurski and his team in particular have made a really great strides on making those ideas a reality. Enhance the quality and employment of employment and jobs. I collected the median income information that lags by about a year. You can see it went up in 2019. You can fully expect it's going to go down in 2020, and probably again in 2021. But that doesn't mean that you're too far off of actually meeting that goal. Average wage, I didn't collect, because I couldn't find a really good data source for it at this point. So at some point, we might want to change the, the measure that we're using. And then for these K O Is, just for various reasons, most notably because 2020 was such a strange year relative to travel and entertainment destinations and things like that, I didn't collect the data, because we really did set a lot of this aside for this year. I certainly can get it. It's, they're decent measures, and we probably will in the future. But for now, I didn't, I didn't pull them, because, well, frankly, they'd be all very red, I believe.
On this, on that slide, though, we have, I think, the Chamber Tracks stays, right?
Yeah.
So actually, during the pandemic, we could probably build a pretty good baseline. And then once those entertainment facilities reopen in larger capacities, then, then we can see where we're kind of at and the impact of it.
That is correct. And Mr. Kurski, correct me if I'm wrong, but the A D R wasn't, or the overnight stays in the A D R for the hotels wasn't horrible, horrible. We have seen some of that data.
Mayor and Council, so if you remember last year, starting in about March, it tanked, and it's slowly coming back. So we have seen an increase this year in the A D R, which is the average daily rate. However, last year, it was significantly lower than it had been in previous years.
Okay.
So going forward, those are good measures to kind of take a look at those entertainment destinations. I just didn't collect them this year, because I knew that they would be low.
Counselor, do you have a question?
I do on this slide. What I, I don't think I would support trying to capture this data now, because it's at its lowest point. And what we really want to do is go back prior to COVID, capture those numbers, and enhance off prior COVID into the future. So we're almost going to have to either get old numbers, or we're going to have to wait until it comes back, use that as a starting point, and build off of that.
Correct. And the, the Chamber of Commerce has all of that information, so we can pull it for quite some years back. Relative to this, our initiatives first were to develop and execute long-term plans that ties back to those K O Is of the four big plans that the council identified as high priority. And as I said, they are all on track, probably further than any of us would have expected them to get at this point. Evaluating economic development policies, that's on track, in progress. I think that you saw a business subsidy policy that increased the minimum wage for business subsidies. I think there are a few other things that need to come through and get reviewed, but we're definitely on track and in progress with that. Business promotion and attraction, I know that our Economic Development Specialist is working on kind of a strategic, like a strategy relative to executing retention and attraction. She went to a class on exactly how to build one of those. Improving culture and tourism marketing, I see this connected to the branding and imaging project that we had. This was slow. It was a rough year for it. We had a good conversation with the Chamber of Commerce two weeks ago, I believe, where we kind of had some good conversations about what that could look like in the future and some partnerships there. And then collaborative partnerships for tourism events. Here again, it was a 2020 thing. It was kind of difficult to identify any real success stories on that front. For the third priority, it was effective public services. Our first desired outcome was a stable workforce, and one of the measures was the turnover rate, which is the number of staff that leave the employment of the city in any given year. Kind of set a target of less than 6%. And that, we definitely did that in 2020. Not a lot of people were moving around jobs in 2020. We were a little above that before, but as I looked through who the people were that were leaving, it was retirements. And so the target might be a little bit off. We might want to increase it, because we do have more retirements coming. We're not seeing a huge outflux of staff to go to other positions. It's, that's well within the range of normal. We're seeing maybe a few more retirements than we may normally otherwise. Supervisory positions filled by internal applicants, 80% in the last two years have been filled by internal applicants, which is pretty good. We've only had five total that were actual openings, that were, we've done a couple of promotions where we realigned a few positions. Didn't count those. I only counted those positions that existed, were opened, and then we hired somebody into them. So in the last two years, out of five supervisory positions that opened, we promoted somebody internally four times out of five. Effective infrastructure planning, prioritized infrastructure plan adopted, yes, that's done. That's both the capital improvement plan, and Mr. Lilahog has been working on 15-year capital improvement plan, and he's been doing a lot of work on the pavement management program, which I think you're going to hear about at some point in the next month or two. So to me, there has been a lot of work done in terms of our effectiveness in infrastructure planning in 2020. Funding philosophy adopted. In truth, I don't think anybody meant to turn 180 degrees on this. I think there was an intention to review. I know that we've talked a little bit about it internally. I'm giving it a green light, because it hasn't been completely set aside. I don't think that we need to make major changes here. We just need to keep our awareness up. And then the last two, staffing studies completed at least three departments and service delivery standards. No, have, have not delivered either of those. I've got a lot of work done in the service delivery standards in earnest, but that is going to take a reasonable amount of time going forward. The effective public services initiatives were the 15-year CIP, which I believe is, you know, 95, 99%. Comprehensive performance management program, I, we have the NeoGov Perform System, that about half of the staff, or maybe a little bit more, are currently using to do performance evaluations that have been trained. It's an automated system that keeps everybody on track. Alyssa Fry, the Human Resources Director, has done a really great job with that one. I would say we're not anywhere near done, because I think that there's an additional kind of level of training relative to it, about like how to be, how to, how to conduct good performance evaluations and engage in performance management. But we are well on our way. Staffing study, again, hasn't been started, but didn't really expect to in 2020. Service level standards started because I've gathered data, and I've gathered ideas, but haven't really moved forward with that. And the develop impact review process, which is kind of the idea of how we can create a master spreadsheet when we create a develop, or when a developer comes in with a development idea, and make sure that it is cost-effective, that will literally be the last thing in this list, because it is dependent on nearly everything else being done. So you wouldn't expect to see that one moving into the green, I would say, until 2023 at the earliest. Final priority is communication. First outcome was more voices engaged. We were using the number of participants as a measure. This is very incomplete. But one of the things that I'd really like to highlight is the work that was done this year, and especially given everything, in parks planning engagement. That's what that number comes from. There are other engagements that I, that I could have pulled and added more to in the numbers. But to me, that number right there is over and above what we would typically have seen on parks planning engagements. I thought that was pretty great.
And if I may, if council will remember, when we were giving Peggy Sue an award a couple of meetings ago, I talked about, frankly, that, you know, we, in the past, we conducted outreach, but now we have effective outreach, and that's a whole different ballgame. And she really has done a lot. She has spearheaded that effort, and has just been tremendous addition to the staff, and has been, once again, just phenomenal in those outreach efforts.
I'll agree on that. I think the outreach we've gotten better at, but then conversely, the, the engagement from the public backwards is really, and that information has been valuable, the, the amount of engagement, I'm very impressed with. We're getting the message out there. We're asking for input, and we're getting responsive. Yes, it's highlighted by parks, but I think, I think we can grow that organically from, for all departments as needed.
Absolutely. This is a great success story. We're actually reaching people before the, the part where they, they come in and say, well, I don't want that there, when it's already too late. So we're, I think that's pretty great. I don't want to short-sell, you know, the police department had a couple of really great events this year where we engaged with people. Didn't count all of them, definitely could. The equity team had a great, a couple of great engagements this year where they engaged people. I believe that Public Works also did a couple of engagements. So I think that, I'm, at this point, I just really want to celebrate the parks planning, but don't want to forget other departments have done a good job as well. We're definitely green on this one. We're reaching more people, and we are, as Mr. Reynolds said, reaching them more effectively.
Well, I, again, I'll just compliment that I think that we used to have the Shakopee Five, or whatever it was, Shakopee Three, and now it's, now we've evolved to the DIG, and I think those are important. I think people watch them, they're engaged, learning about the community, and that's great stuff.
You just had to take that dig at me, didn't you?
No, 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 no. It was a compliment. We're building on that.
Yeah, I, I think it's, I think it's pretty impressive, considering the quarantine and the fact that people aren't getting out. And people are getting out, and there are, they are talking about Shakopee and being involved. And so that's, that's very impressive.
Great.
So the last two measures here is that we had two dealing, uh, community survey measures. First one dealing with trusting, believing excellent or good, trusting the city on the community survey. The two results we have are from 17- The two results we have are from 17 and 19, it's 54 and 51%. I would call that the same number, but I think it's something that we need to be aware of. And then also, overall image went from 56 to 48, which is probably a decline, but if you think about some of the things that were happening in that timeframe, as we talked about when that survey came in, we kind of knew what was going on there, but I think you can go to the next. We are doing the community survey again, it's starting at the end of this month. One of the things that we did is we pushed it back from February when it was cold and hoping that people will be maybe a little more willing to take the survey and be out in the parks and then take the survey, and maybe have a little bit of a different mindset when they take it. But, you know, tying to those two points, the, we did do the branding and image work, so we have those ideas for brand and image, we are entertaining, we are innovating, and we are thriving. And our communications manager is now working on the strategic communications plan, which I do believe is going to be here in front of the council, kind of going through it and explaining to you what our plans are sometime in the first half of this year, so that's on track as well. Another thing that kind of built off of, that builds off of the brand and image project. And then finally, develop strategies to reach underserved populations, and while I think we've made progress, both because of that measure that I showed you before relative to park planning, and because of the people that showed up to the police picnic with the police in, in midsummer, night team night, diaper drive, other engagement efforts that we've done, we've, we've made some strides, but I think there's still more work to do to really uncover the best ways to engage with those underserved populations. It was brought to my attention today that we're doing a better job of making surveys and other things available in other languages, so that's one step, but, so some progress, but still a ways to go. I thought it was interesting when I looked at an overall summary, in my mind, we are 25% through this four-year plan after a year. I see it as moving along really well, everybody, you know, pulled their weight, pulled their share. Out of all of the key outcome indicators, I had 13 of 23 is green, and I had six of 23 is yellow, zero is red, and then four of them that I either didn't collect or asked to kind of set aside for a minute. So 56% in the green, that's pretty decent for right now, after year one. Initiatives, 13 out of 17 were green, three out of 17 were yellow, and most of those were because we hadn't started. And one out of 17 was yellow because we're again suggesting to kind of suspend that one for now. So overall, I think I'd just like to, to make sure that the council is aware that we are making progress on these things, even if you don't see it on a day-to-day basis, and that there's a lot of work being done to advance, you know, these overall strategies.
Excellent, that was a good overview. You know, from where we were when we were just thinking about this, and our workshops and trying to put this together, now even, you know, what appears to be three-quarters of the way through a pandemic, we can measure some things and see some progress, couple that it was tough to, to measure during that period, but feels good to be able to quantify some of this stuff where we weren't doing that years ago. Mr. Reynolds?
And I think that council is very well aware of, of kind of the, the silver lining of the COVID cloud. It allowed us an opportunity to gather some data that we wouldn't have had the opportunity to, to gather before. One of the classic examples of that is the impact of the major entertainment destinations on our police force. And as you know, every, every month, we've been able to gather data on that, and it's, it's interesting to see what that data shows us. It really, it really does allow us then to, at some point in the future, have a conversation about the impact and the subsequent impact on our taxpayers. And we certainly are, are preparing that, obviously now is not the time. We had kind of looked at doing that discussion this, this summer, but we're probably looking at next year at this point, once we get back to normal and, and all of our entertainment destinations are at full strength.
Good. Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor, I'd like to see a template made by staff to use throughout all the departments on infrastructure projects. You know, we've seen a couple of projects now come forward that had an estimation dollar amount to them, but that didn't include administration, engineering, and all the other things that go with projects. You know, some departments are doing it a little different than other departments, I'd like to see a more uniform process across the board so that we can get better handle on the total cost of future projects and estimates. It's going to be very important as we move forward that, you know, we know that the capital improvement park projects and funds, park funds are getting down, and, and park projects are all over budget, and, you know, infrastructure's only going to go up in price probably. And if our estimates don't include some of these other costs, we're going to be caught behind, so I'd like to see a uniform process throughout all the departments, try to tighten that up a little bit, if, if possible.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mayor Mars. Councilor Lehman, you're exactly right. We need to do that as part of our C I P process for the five years, you know, we're continuing to build that. That was a failure that essentially was mine on an oversight, and both planning and engineering and I will sit down to try to make sure that we have that all brought forward into the future, but my apologies, we'll, we'll continue to dial that in and we'll, we'll, we'll get it tighter for you.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Yeah, I think, you know, the, the C I P and the estimates are an ongoing thing, right? You put a pencil to them and you work hard. I think in, actually in the last year, we've had some very good bids on several, many projects. Yes, there's been a few that are over, but I, I look at the whole, if, if we had 20 projects in the last two years, I think three-quarters have been at or below budget on that. I mean, Ridge Creek was ballooning up, and then we go out for bid, and, and that was good news in the end for that. But I agree, and I think as staff takes that five-year C I P and goes to a 15, and, you know, the numbers out that far will be a little tough, do you just take an inflationary number and, and multiply it out, and, but I think if you work it, it can become better and tighter in the short term.
Mayor, maybe you're missing my point. My point isn't trying to be 100% spot-on on a project 15 years out. My point is more, more of a checklist, okay? If you're, if you've got a project in the next five years, and you've got an estimated cost on the project or for the actual stuff, and then you've got these other things that go into projects, whether it's the administrative cost, the engineering cost, maybe outside consultant cost, maybe utility, whatever, you've got all these other pieces, and all I'm looking for is a, a standard checklist that anybody that's putting together or working on one of these projects takes this checklist and checks the boxes and says, yep, I've got that in there, I've got, I've got all the key things I need in here to be as accurate as possible.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Councilor Lehman, we do need to do that, and we will.
Appreciate it.
Thank you. Councilor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First of all, I'd like to say a great progress on some of these projects. Looks like we're moving forward, I think COVID has created some opportunities in some cases to collect the data for one case, and have the time to work on some other projects, so that's good. And of course, the long-term C I P is going to be that work in progress. What I do see, if we're looking at our priorities here and our, enhancing our community strengths, and, and the big ideas, making those big ideas a reality, what I'm seeing is some fundings, you know, shortfalls, and to be able to get over that, I think we should start planning for that as well. I know we talked about the Innovation Center, and that's kind of a, working on its own, it's kind of on its own little organic cycle, but the, the plans for the, the river utilization and the gateways, you know, those monument signs, those aren't something that we can just throw on the budget here and there, I think those are something we have to plan for. And I would like to move forward and, and start looking at the scope of how we make that happen over the next few years. And I'd like to open that up for discussion if, if that's all right with you, Mr. Mayor.
I think unlike the gateway signs, I think incrementally, I think we're going to see that later this, this summer here, I think a couple of those are in the works. You know, we did go out for state bonding last year for one of our projects for the Bed Bridge, and we were, you know, partially successful for that. We did go out for the Innovation Center, and that's still in progress. Part of my, part of my liaison report was that we're trying to engage our legislative folks in St. Paul about our riverbank stabilization and doing the river piece, really, in, in the big picture, that's great, but none of it can really start until we stabilize a riverbank, so we're trying to get our representatives from St. Paul on board to continue to carry that marker that we've had. And I think, you know, hopefully we'll, we'll see if we can get the legislators on board and then see in the big picture if that, if that bonding bill will produce some results for us. Not that we're a community that asks all the time, but for that riverfront, another piece that we, you know, unfortunately didn't get last year or so.
Well, I understand the riverfront stabilization portion of it, but we had talked about river utilization, the Sweeney Marina, we've talked, you know, we have historic assets down there that'll require some investment. We may even want to look at property acquisitions still along the riverfront, if that happens to be coming up, lighting projects, maintaining the tunnel, we talked about that at one point as part of our downtown project, when we were working on that. Those cultural assets and how we interpret them with signage, things like that, those are all a portion of that whole riverfront and cultural corridor that have no funding and no scope really at this point, and I know we're working on some of those projects with Confluence and things, so we'll know more then, but that money just doesn't appear out of nowhere. I'd like to start, you know, looking at the scope of what this project might be and start investing in it over time, so it doesn't come up in one big bubble. And I think we can do that without laying markers down in the sand exactly what it is, as long as we have a scope and what's in scope and what's out of scope.
Councilor Lehman?
Thank you, Mayor. Just an observation from my, my standpoint, we've, we've got quite the park and C I P projects long-term to fund, and quite frankly, probably some funding challenges on the highest priority of things. We've got a federal and a state government that are coming out of some pretty substantial COVID spending, and everybody's waiting to get the economy roaring again. It's probably not the best time to hit people when they're down financially. And, you know, to be honest, I don't know that a lot of the folks at the state are looking at these kind of issues as their top priority, and rightfully so of them, in some cases there, there are, you know, we, we tend to look at ourselves as, yeah, they might be top priorities for us, but they've got to look at the state as a whole, and there's, you know, a dam ready to break over here, there's, there's other issues that are much more pressing than a cultural corridor. Not that it ain't important, Jay, just that from their standpoint, there are real pressing issues that have to be dealt with first. So I, you know, I, I don't know if this is the right time to go gung ho spending on things that are just nice to have when we've got some challenges on things that we absolutely have to have.
Well, I think-
You know, we've got some serious growth happening that's going to put some burden on some infrastructure that we're going to be asking for help with, that aren't, that isn't our infrastructure. To get this infrastructure up to where it needs for the kind of growth that we're, we're having, that's going to take some money from these entities that we're asking for money, so that's one issue. We're also going to see a, a need for a lot of service-oriented increases, whether you add a bunch of roads, you add a bunch of plow drivers, you add a bunch of plow trucks, you add all this equipment, all these man-hours or woman-hours, and placing is the same, fires are the same, so you've got all these issues, and, you know, and I'm back to what is the priority? You certainly aren't going to raise taxes $33 million to, to stabilize a riverbank. So, you know, at some point, you got to figure out what is your priorities, no different than a household, you know, your roof is leaking, do you go buy a new TV? You probably fix the roof, so that's just my two cents on how I look at things in life.
Thank you. Mr. Reynolds?
Yeah, and this, this is pretty instructive, actually, this discussion, because, you know, what we're trying to, both, both councilmen are absolutely on point. And, and, and what we're trying to do as a staff is to create balance here. You know, we, we certainly want to be able to bring, you know, as I said before, not all of these projects are going to come to fruition. Everything that you see in that comprehensive plan and everything you see in the park plan will not come to fruition. However, as we work through the process and we have funding available, whether that be, as Councilman Whiting is suggesting, putting away some every year in order to have some funds then at a period down the line where we can invest in a particular project, or if it's in bonding, or if it's going to the state and getting state bonding, those are all options that we have. But also remember that we have the luxury of being one of the lowest tax communities in the state, and we want to continue to be that, but it is a balance. And, and so, we're going to try to plan for those things we can, and when there's an opportunity, we'll have that plan ready, and we'll have some fundings, and we'll be creative, we've been creative in the past in how we funded some stuff, and we're going to continue to do that. But the whole point of the plan itself was, is to have the markers on the map, that we know these are projects that we want to move forward if we can. And often, the biggest stumbling block to any project moving forward is how do you pay for it? And, you know, we're, we're doing things that we haven't done in the past. We, we've gone to the state legislature last year for three projects, actually had one funded. You know, that's never happened for Shakopee before. We're going back this year to talk about the riverbank stabilization, which is, Councilor Lehman, to your point, it's not a leaky roof yet, but if we don't get that riverbank stabilized, we've got assets that will end up in the river at some point in the future. We know that, we can see the, the long-term progression of the erosion of the bank itself, so. But both of you are directly on point, your, your, your concerns and comments are, are perfect as staff is trying to keep that balance between both of those positions and find a way forward, so thank you.
Thank you. Other councilors, Councilor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor, and I am on, and I agree with both of the councilmen. Because of COVID, I feel that we do need to stay more vigilant of our financial, you know, our financial numbers, but again, like the administrator just said, if there's that opportunity, you know, go ahead and, and, and maybe set aside something and, and work along and do something. And on my side, I'd like to see or, you know, comment- And on my side, I'd like to see or, you know, comment on a couple of things I'd like to see, some a couple of ideas. I know tonight we passed the Green Step. We continue to work with the with the schools and the Green Step program and I I'm very, you know, happy with that. I like that we're continuing that. And today I was looking through some of the best practices that the Green Steps have. And I'd like to see if we could somehow work with the schools and work on number 27 and 29, which is local foods. That's best practices, action number 27 and number 29. And piggyback with Councilman Lehman was saying, the infrastructure, I think, you know, that we will be continuing to work. Number 29 works great with that and working with Spock, that'd be a great, that's climate adaptation and community resilience. And I think that would be a great thing we can implement, planning, policy operations and the budgeting process, doing that. So I don't know if that'd be an opportunity where we can work on our priorities. I mean, I think it'd be number two, enhancing community strength, different things, effective public work. I mean, I feel it it would fit in perfect. And the last thing I'd like to see is if we could also continue, start initiate some type of engagement with our youth. Maybe opening up a seat in our boards or commission, something where we can engage with them and and see what they can bring to help us. I don't know. Those were just my ideas.
Wow, thank you. Other comments? Counselor Brennan?
One thing that I have, I've been thinking about branding and who is Shakopee. And I think about the businesses that are here that are so strong and corporately. And I would like to see a made in Shakopee brand and see if we can get those businesses to support a made in Shakopee logo on their on their websites or on their different packaging. Because I think all that all that information or all that, all of that goes out to a greater community and has an opportunity to bring in new businesses. And I would also like to see a community engagement network of people and having different pockets of neighborhoods that are are being engaged, that are meeting, that are that are meeting with us. Whoever council members would be interested or staff interested in in talking about issues relating to Shakopee, try to get the two sides of the geographical sides connected through conversations. And you know, I know it's difficult right now with COVID, but but I think that we're getting to that point where we can definitely get together. And I think people will probably appreciate the fact that they're meet out again, meeting with their neighbors.
Great. Counselor Lehman?
Mayor, Counselor Brennan might have just hit on something very huge. When when she talked about the made in Shakopee, I was thinking, well, I don't make nothing, but fixed in Shakopee, bought in Shakopee, found in Shakopee, bought in Shakopee. This could be much larger, actually. You might have hit on something very huge here in a marketing branding idea. I I I envision maybe make can fix in Shakopee when I fix the car and if they give me permission, I'll just can fix in Shakopee.
Yep, I I like that. You'd pop the little logo of Shakopee on a on a sticker and
Maybe you bought something in Shakopee and you put the little sticker on it says bought in Shakopee. Made in Shakopee, bought in Shakopee, found in Shakopee, fixed in Shakopee. You could do all kinds of things with this. That's a great idea, I think. Good job.
Well, I, you know, I look at big picture stuff. I think the health of our community is very well. We have above average, medium income at 87. We have household growth, 26,000 jobs. We're we're growing both housing and and commercially, which I think is great. I think our city has become much more effective and much more efficient in the last five years. I think their strategic plan that we started on a couple of years ago and now to see results coming in even during a whether we're going to put an asterisk next to 2020 or not. But I think really sets the baseline for the future. I know we talk about funding and and that's always a difficult thing to create that right balance. But I know the previous administration, you know, set aside money that did that helped fund our downtown infrastructure project, parking lot and the plazas and such. You know, maybe this summer during the budget aspect, we we think and talk about that again. I think you guys, I think the previous administration and I think it was 500,000 a year they saved for three or four years to help pay for that project. And that might be a just a discussion point in the future. But I think back on the strategic plan and Nate's done a very good job with staff in trying to take all the things we talk about and build consensus and then look at those data points. I think I'm excited about seeing the next update and then seeing how we're doing. Hopefully coming out of the pandemic, so. Do you have any last closing comments, Nate?
No, sir.
Anything else? Counselor Whiting?
I just want to circle back on the thought that you had brought up, but, you know, we have big ideas. Are they are they big dreams? Are they big ideas? And how do you get there? And you you need to set a roadmap. And I know times have been tough this year, but, you know, you have to put a plan in place to be able to get to a certain point down the road. So I think we need to look at that during our budget process. And like I said, what are those priorities? Whether those are the monuments or finishing some of those projects we had pegged at the in the initial downtown improvements or I know some of them got kicked off of that, but and then again, the riverfront, the riverbank stabilization will eventually probably take up a big chunk of money of the city's portion, along with any other investments we may get from the state. But we need to start planning that and finding out what steps we need to invest in when and where and have that funding available when it's needed. That's all my point was.
Well, thank you. Thank you all. A good, open discussion, much appreciated. I know staff appreciates it. So if there's no other questions about the strategic plan update, thank you. And then we would move ahead then to 12A, which was our city bill list. Any comments on that? I I just make a point that the utility, did they overpay us and we had to return some money, Nate? Is that what I see?
Mayor and council members, that is correct. So when they did the true up calculation, there was one month that was missing in the calculation. So you'll see in the checklist, there's two separate checks. One is returning their check and the other one is we're actually we owed them as part of the true up of the
We're going to be all square though, right?
We'll be all square after that.
Excellent. Any other comment on the city bill list? If not, we'd move ahead to our liaison report and administration report. Counselor Lehman?
I don't think I have one today.
Okay, Counselor Whiting?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. As you saw in our earlier agenda item, the interview committee met. We had some great candidates. I want to thank everybody that came out and interviewed. It's great to see people interested in being part of Shakopee. Also, MVTA met a few weeks ago, it seems like. MVTA in Southwest are working on a system wide study. It's pretty wide scope. It's going to take a look at its current state, gather stakeholder input, do some services evaluation and then kind of reevaluate the network design. There has been some service changes and there was a scheduling change to the 442 line that goes from Apple Valley Transit Station to the Mall of America. And then there's a new route, at least it's an improved route, 447, which goes from Apple Valley Transit Station all the way to Mystic Lake Casino. So it goes by Burnsville Center, stops in downtown Prior Lake on its way to Mystics. So maybe in part of your connection and things that you need to get to. But some more opportunities that get closer and closer to Shakopee. Also, I did notice that Blue Lake has a public hearing coming up on March 15th for some plant improvements. I don't know if you probably all got that email as well. And then I had the opportunity to help with the cap agency and Esperanza on their food distribution this past Saturday here in Shakopee. That's all I have.
Counselor, thank you very much. Counselor Brennan?
Live, Learn and Earn Housing and Transit Committees will be have completed their plans and they will be presenting to the Skilled General Committee in March and looking for input back on them. Spock has been interviewing investment managers and they will be presented at the next Spock meeting. And the automated metering infrastructure presentation was last night. And that's to have automated metering, obviously, in the system. And it's a it's probably something that would be completed in 2023. What the consultant has found is that Spock really needs to have a improvement in their customer service system structure. And and that's needed first before they go into the automated metering infrastructure. So we'll be looking at that and it will push back the project for automated metering infrastructure for probably a year or so. I think that that's, let's see, there's a Spock water survey being asked for people to complete. It came in the bill, your last bill. And there's a website for if you want water treatment or not and what your thoughts on our on our on water quality.
Counselor, thank you so much. Counselor Contreras?
Thank you, Mayor. First of all, our interview committee, thank you to everyone who came out and was interviewed. And congratulations to the ones who went up, started to serve on those boards Friday. I also attended the Cap and Esperanza food drive and I believe it was, we served over 350 families, if I'm not mistaken. And last for schools, just an update that every employee, and I mean every, because I verify, I mean, I asked and I verified that every employee has had the opportunity to a to a vaccine, a COVID vaccine, if they if they choose to have it. So that is a great, I mean, that's that's great, you know, because now we are going to, in a way, start to transition to full in-person learning. And as being part of the Pratt team, which is the pandemic response advisory team, we the Pratt team offered good recommendations for future transition into in-person for secondary schools because now the the elementary schools are already in person, but for our secondary school. So that is great news. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. For my mayor report, we as a city received a Census Bureau certificate from the regional office out of Chicago stating that our region had a 97% or higher of self-response on the US Census in 2020. And I'll send that to staff and they can send that out to us electronically. But the old get out the count, get out the be counted at the census. So that was kind of nice. Been meeting with our local senate and representatives in regard to the pass to have a bonding bill for riverbank stabilization. It's a little more refined than our ask and marker last year. So it's just on infrastructure, riverbank stabilization to protect our assets and also reduce erosion. Met with county staff and had a couple of meetings with city staff, very good informative meetings, get caught up on things. And I will mention that I did see that our spring cleanup day is going to be April 24th. I know it's just the beginning of March here, but pretty soon the days will get warmer and sunny and people can think about cleaning up Saturday, April 24th, and more details to come. And that's my report and we'll move on to our city administration report. Mr. Reynolds?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. A couple of issues tonight. First, as we talked a little bit about earlier, our community survey is coming out soon. We will have 2,000 people that will receive a an invitation in the mail. But we will also have an opportunity for individuals, just like last year, to get online and complete the survey there. We often look at neighboring communities as sometimes as, you know, when we're looking at things that maybe we should think about it as a community or at least have the discussion. For us, it's sometimes communities do that with us, with our our credit card bill that our award winning work that the police department and council was willing to go along with. That obviously had many different communities in the area interested and then they were looking to put something on the books of a similar nature. I wanted to bring this up to you. Prior Lake has just instituted or is in the process of instituting a ban on flavored vaping products. And this was interesting to me. I had never thought about this, but in talking with the mayor of Prior Lake and the city administrator, you know, there was there was a real concern about those particular products being used by youth. And, you know, I'm not saying this is something that we should do, but I think it might not be a bad idea that if we at least have the conversation and maybe bring the county in and and the health department and have them talk a little bit about the statistics that they shared with Prior Lake. Again, I just throw that out there. I'll 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 basically poll you by email later as to whether or not you think we should do something. But I wanted to bring it to your attention because I think it's something that at least merits your attention as to whether or not we should take a look at that more in depth. This week is the 10 year anniversary of the IWG, which is the working group that includes the SMSC, the cities of Prior Lake and Shakopee and the county.
10 years.
10 years. And for the public, it it it's an incredibly valuable organization that allows all of us to get together in a room and and talk about issues that we all have. And it's a clearinghouse of ideas. It also is an opportunity for us to not always agree, certainly, but but at least have discussions on topics that concern all of us. I thought I thought that was pretty remarkable that it's been 10 years. And I will actually forward out to all of you tomorrow, the original agreement, which I dug up some time ago with the help of the SMSC, actually. It's really interesting when you read that and and see what the purpose is and see how it's 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 transpired in the last 10 years. It's really been it's really been a great working group and and has a lot of value added, I think, to all of the organizations. And finally, I I'd just like to thank the Shakopee Public Utilities and the Commission for partnering with the city in the annual flower pots downtown. I think it's it's tremendous to have a partner, a strong partner in the in the utility. I continue to look forward of that partnership growing in the future. And this is just another small step on 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 that partnership. And so essentially, the the city and and SBU will purchase the the flowers. The SBU will hang the flowers. The city will maintain the flowers and the community gets to enjoy the flowers. So pretty excited about that and are looking forward to to winter being on its way and us working together to get the flower pots downtown. And that's all I have, Mayor.
Great, thank you. That, Counselor Lehman?
Other business, Mayor. I have a question and I don't know who to ask, so I thought I'd throw it out there. The the storms down south in Texas and wherever else they hit, we heard a lot about big gas about big gas bills going out throughout the country, is that gonna hit us up here? I'm not really sure, I guess there was four large, uh, energy suppliers in the country, and I don't know if, should we be expecting a five thousand, ten thousand dollar gas bill because of Texas and Minnesota? Who do I ask? Does anybody have a contact?
Uh, Councilor Brennan?
Uh, well, I would talk to Greg Drunt, um, who's the interim utilities manager, um, and, um, he's assured the commission that that's not gonna be occurring, um, here in Shakopee, um, and there are, um, there are funds available at the MMUA and the M, that will stabilize those high peaks and...
But this was natural gas.
Yep.
And Shakopee Public Utilities doesn't do natural gas.
Well, i- i- we have discussed it, um, so if you, I guess, I guess you would wanna talk to, uh, Center Point then, if you wanna talk about natural gas.
Right.
But there's also on electricity and...
Does staff have a contact with Center Point to find out if Minnesota's gonna get hit in this mess?
We can, we can get you a, a, a contact, uh, Councilor Lehman, or we can, we can ask on your behalf.
Yeah, I don't, the, the articles I read, I don't think we're getting ten thousand dollar monthly utility bills, but the commodity price of natural gas has moved up because of the demand, um, uh, you know, would we see incremental there for our gas portion of our utility? We'll see what Center Point says about that.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Councilor Whiting, did you have your hand up earlier? I apologize.
Uh, no, I just wanted to comment, uh, it sounds like we're gonna miss out on the flower basket fundraiser this year, that's always the height of Shakopee's social activity, I suppose with COVID, uh, uh, we, we don't need that now if we're gonna be funding it, though, but, uh, it was always a fun event.
Uh, well, I, I will say, uh, uh, Councilor Whiting, I, I fully expect the chamber will always be willing to write, to, to do a fundraiser, and I, I think that there will be another fundraiser that will take its place.
Yeah, with all the, you know, I think that was developed by Main Street, right?
Yes, sir.
From that, and the flower baskets were, were one aspect of a big, big part of it, but there were certainly some other things, so hopefully we saved our pennies and, and, uh, maybe there'll be an opportunity again. Um, I just wanna mention the IWG group that I've been part of since I've been mayor, um, you know, I go back a lot of years and the, you know, butting heads with the, with the community and things like that twenty-plus years ago. Um, I wasn't involved in the start of the IWG, but during the last six years or so, I actually look at, that's how you build relationships, and it's about building relationships, and as, uh, Mr. Reynolds said, it, it's a very open conversation of what everybody is doing and seeing where there's opportunity. Um, there are still areas where we might not agree, but we're talking about them, right? That is highly, highly valuable, uh, just to have the discussion. Twenty years ago, that didn't exist. Um, so to see this IWG group get formed and move ahead, and now ten years, um, really a tribute to the county, uh, the Shakopee Mid-awakan Community, Prior Lake, and the city of Shakopee, so, um, just to comment on that. Um, other business before this council?
Mayor, there's been a lot of projects that had mutual benefit for all involved that have actually come together and worked out pretty well, so...
We've all become stronger partners, and I agree. Um, the stuff that wasn't happening or seemed like it would never happen twenty years ago, so you are very right. If there are, is no other business, uh, before this council, I would enter, Councilor Brennan?
I make a motion to adjourn to Tuesday, March sixteenth, twenty twenty-one, at seven PM.
Whiting, second.
I have a second from Councilor Whiting, a motion and a second, further discussion, 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 by voice vote, Mr. Reynolds.
Councilor Contreras?
Aye.
Councilor Brennan?
Aye.
Councilor Whiting?
Aye.
Councilor Lehman?
Aye.
Mayor Mars?
Aye. Thank you all very much, we stand adjourned at nine fourteen PM.
Thanks, everyone.